Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the June 28, 2022 meeting of the Foxborough School Committee to order. And our first issue on the agenda is open public comment, having none. And if anybody who's currently here has none, then we will dispense of that. And we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is approval of executive session minutes from May 17, 2022, which is in our packets. Does anybody have any questions or additions?
I do not. I'd like to make a motion that we approve and release for access. I forget.
Public.
Thank you. The meetings from the executive session on May 17.
A second.
Awesome. All in favor? All right, 400. And so those are approved and released for the public. Next up, our Teaching and Learning Highlight, Building a Bridge to the Community. And we have a few guests here to talk about that. Would anybody like to introduce?
Yeah, I guess I'll take it.
Do you have Billy Ivets and Ralph DeBona come up?
Yes, please.
Yeah, gentlemen, would you please come up?
So, a couple of years ago, you actually had the, they came in front of us as well to kind of give you a little bit of an update of what was going on. I think you all realize we have a lot of programs at the high school, you know, between the music programs, the arts, obviously, the curriculum and the AP classes and all that. But one of the things that Foxborough also has is the, you know, business tech ed curriculum. And part of that is, you know, the technology side, and then part of it's the hands-on wood shop that we still maintain and deal with. And I wanted you to see kind of what your money has been going towards and what we've been able to do in the last few years as part of that update. So I think we'll, I'll turn it over to Ralph and Billy to start it. Ralph DeBona is the department head as well as teacher within it, and Billy Ivets obviously is one of the other teachers within the shop and tech ed area.
Thank you, Bill. Nice to meet you all.
Thanks, man.
And we're delighted to be here to update you on what we do in our tech ed department. And I'm responsible for teaching the, all the mechanical CAD stuff. I teach 2D and 3D CAD. I teach architectural CAD. We have a wonderful 3D architectural package. And Billy, when you say new blood is important, well, he's brought some new blood into the wood department and has done a phenomenal job, and you'll see what he's had his kids do after I go away. So there it is. There's our CAD lab. We have 20 seats of new computers running 2D, 3D mechanical software, industry-standard software. So the kids are getting the latest and greatest on what the industry is using today. And like I mentioned, we have a 3D architectural package where the kids can build a 2D floor plan, and in the background, it creates a 3D model of the house. And you can do virtual tours, and it's really nice stuff. You do landscaping with it. It's just great. Somebody just flashed by the, I just want to show you some of the equipment we have. The plotter, there it is, very high, it's a nice plotter. It's an E-size plotter, and it prints out beautiful color pictures of our architectural renderings and mechanical stuff. And then just to show you a rendering of what the architectural package can do, and that was plotted on this printer. And then we just got a new 3D printer. We've had 3D printers for quite a while, but the, and the technology has changed so much that this is the latest and greatest out there. And the last 3D printer we had malfunctioned enough that we had to put a lot of money into it, so it was easier just to buy a brand-new one. And the kids have a lot of fun on this, as I'll show you. The next shot, just I'll just show you a picture of a very sophisticated, two-dimensional, industry-standard drawings that the kids create. It may not mean anything to you, but anybody in the industry will look at that and know exactly what's going on, and these are the drawings that you take to the manufacturer, and they build that part. The next shot is with the 3D printer. You can see a, somebody designed or drew the Eiffel Tower, not the Eiffel Tower, the, thank you. And then they do little funky little stuff with logos and, but the part that you see in the front is that that was drawn on our 3D software, and then we can convert that file, and then that part was printed on that 3D printer. And then to have a little fun, we also have this little handheld scanner that we could scan any object by rotating it around by hand and converting it into a couple of files that the printer will read. So we like to scan, or the kids love to scan themselves. So we just sit there, and we rotate that scanner around their head, and it creates the file. And the scary part about it, it looks just like. So if any of you would like your face scanned, just come down anytime, and we'll do it for you.
Awesome.
The next shot is of our wood shop, and here's where I'm going to turn it over to Bill, who will turn it over to Bill, and I'm done.
So, a little over 10 years ago, when I got here, the wood shop itself had started to go downward as far as what the equipment and the safety issues and the concerns. And I met with Ralph back then at the time. I think there was some concern by the staff that if we, if they pushed for new equipment and stuff, that, you know, we'd close down the department. Personally, I have the opposite feeling for both the family consumer sciences and for this type of a shop, because I think it's a very important adjunct to what kids learn and gives them something for the future. So we started looking at this shop and looking at the cost of replacing it. And it doesn't show on this picture very well, but there's quite a bit of equipment in this area. So one of the first things that we looked at that we had a real concern with, if, you flip to the next page, was one of the table saws. And the problem with the, any of this equipment is really the safety around it and what, you know, what could go wrong, obviously, if unsupervised or if just not being careful at the time. This particular saw is made that it senses, and if it senses that your hand or finger or anything is near it, it goes into an automatic lockdown. It really literally destroys the blade and everything because it just stops, and it would not cut your fingers off, would not cut your hand off or anything like that. Our old equipment didn't have any of that type of safety stuff, and it was basically what a normal shop would have. And obviously, in this day and age, that was a big concern for us. If you flip to the next one, the next biggest thing that we got involved with looking at, and we did that, the first thing last summer, and we did this last summer, and that was this dust collection system that goes throughout the, all the equipment and basically pulls it in so that it's not just floating around in the air and creating problems. The old one, again, had been there for 20-plus years, maybe longer, wasn't really working right. And so we did a lot of research. It took us actually quite a while to find this particular unit, which was almost a duplicate of what we had had there, obviously, new technology. And so again, we used some of the resources last year, I think I came to you at the end of the year talking about how I was using end-of-year funds, to also replace this item, which was a critical thing. And I'll give Bill a lot of credit because there's a lot of underground piping that this thing connects to, which had a lot of stuff in it, a lot of junk, a lot of, you know, rags, pieces of wood, things that who knows how they got there over the years. Anyways, it was making it a little difficult for the unit to work, and he did a great job getting that to work. And now, obviously, with the equipment, when it does run, it runs very efficiently, and it does keep the shop in a great position. We have used some of the end-of-year money this year as part of our plan to buy a new bandsaw, again, with all the safety devices, a new planer, and a new jointer, which, and I think the fourth piece that's coming in later on this summer will be the last piece, which is another smaller table saw. So we've been able to accomplish basically upgrading the entire shop to basically having new technology that is safer to operate, that can do a lot of what the old stuff did, but just in a better environment. But it also gave us another piece that we were trying to get to, and we needed to upgrade the equipment to get to that, and that is to have the automatic safety shutdowns where someone could just whack a button, and it shuts down the entire shop. We can currently do that, but we shut down the CAD lab and a couple other parts of the building at the same time, so create some problems. So again, I wanted you, this part of this demonstration or this discussion is really so that you can see that we take at the end of the year, when we're looking at what we are available, resources are, and we look at our different departments. You heard it last week in the arts area, where they needed some pottery wheels and stuff like that. Again, we assessed what our financial situation is, what we've been able to not spend during the year for different reasons. A lot of it this year is still COVID-related, you know, we were full bore from the beginning of the year on a lot of stuff, and put it into resource areas that we, you know, basically can enhance that part of the curriculum. So this is what we've accomplished with what we're going to upgrade. By the time the kids come back to school in the fall, all this equipment will be operational, all the safeties and electrical parts will be completed, and the kids will have what I hope to be a very safe and nice shop. Now I'll turn it back to Bill as to what they've been able to do with this type of equipment.
Hello. Thank you for having me tonight. Yeah, so I actually slid into the wood shop role last year. I teach the introduction to wood shop, or what we offer, I should say, is introduction to wood shop. Then we have advanced woodworking, woodworking three, and home tech repair. You can see the picture here, we have some Adirondack chairs. Those were made by a couple of our students in the advanced woodworking class, or the woodworking three class, sorry. And then we have a few other projects. This here is a chicken coop that was made in our home tech repair class. The chicken coops are great projects because we get to really, I mean, on a smaller scale, obviously, kind of go through building a home. We talk about, you know, different anatomy of a house, whether it's a header, jack studs or trimmer studs.
If you flip forward, you'll see some of those.
Yeah, so you can see kind of the inside here. We go over rafters, how to cut rafters. We go through the different types of, you know, trim work and finish work on the outside, where you can see where we do, like casing out windows. That there is a box where the chickens will hopefully lay their eggs. We have a chicken coop in my house. They don't use the boxes too much, but the plan is for them to use the eggs and to access the eggs through the box. We go through the vinyl siding and the other finish work, roofing. So we get to kind of go or touch upon a lot of different aspects of a home and how to fix things, too, as well. So some of the cool things we also do in that class that are probably not in those pictures, we talk a little bit about electrical work, repairing drywall. I know having six kids at home watching tonight, they know who they are. I've had a couple holes I've had to repair myself. It's probably one of the students' favorite classes, hanging the drywall, but putting the holes in the drywall, they love that part.
Have volunteers for that?
I tell them to use a hammer, but they tend to when I turn my back. There's always a fist or something that flies through. But so we actually teach them how to repair it using different types of things. We try out different, you know, patches and all sites, types of different ways to kind of achieve, you know, closing the hole and making it look right and doing it right. So here's another picture. This was a doghouse with a little farmer's porch that we built. So it was kind of neat. Again, you get to kind of learn how to do decking and proper flashing with decking and so the water doesn't come back into the house. I don't know what we have next. So this was another project we got given to us at the end of the year. It was kind of a cool little community outreach. There was a bridge that connected, and I'm not sure that the neighborhoods, it's the Valley Forge neighborhood from the high school property, that was really rundown and beat up. This is the new bridge here that we connected. It ended up being about a, it's close to like a 50-foot bridge, maybe 50 feet plus. Again, a great opportunity for the students to see how to build a deck properly using the pressure-treated lumber. We talked about pressure-treated lumber, the composite decking in comparison to pressure-treated decking and all that other fun stuff. So we got a chance to do that, and, you know, it was just a really good opportunity for the kids to kind of give back to the community that's helped us out. We have a few of the students there, Lincoln Moore, it looks like, Liam Fox, Colin Light, and a few other students. I can't make out their faces that well, but they did a great job helping out, you know, with the project, and they were into it. They enjoyed getting outside and moving around and using their hands, and that's kind of the cool thing about the wood shop is it's really hands-on, and it's a lot of fun. I know the neighborhood reached out to both Ralph and I. I think it was Bob and Joan Manning sent a very nice thank you card, and I know, you know, just seeing people when they were cutting through there, were really appreciative of it. And then the same thing with the students going, you know, from the school over onto or to access either, you know, that Valley Forge neighborhood and even further onto Lake Soul Street. They were, they're happy with being able to kind of be safe and walk on a pretty sturdy bridge rather than, you know, taking a good five-foot leap over a few sections, so.
So this, the Mannings actually, their son, who is probably in his early 50s at this point, was the one who first created this bridge from the neighborhood to get across there. The easement goes between their property and one of the other neighbors, and it was granted as a, basically as a safety easement to get out of the high school. And it was for a while on our plans as one of our emergency, you know, ways to get away, but the bridge and the area had been so bad that it really wasn't usable or isn't usable. So when we brought this to the group here, basically the thing was to rebuild it so that I, A, we'd have the option again if we needed to, you know, use it as an evacuation room, B, to really basically make it for the students who come every morning and every afternoon. And a lot of them do come off of South Street because it's a shortcut through and brings them right to the back near the music wing. So a lot of them use that. And quite honestly, it's amazing how many families you'll see every night going up there and walking across. They might be walking the dog, they might be taking their bike across to get to the high school property and go around. So, you know, we thought it was a great project for a lot of reasons, but it was nice in the fact that basically what the schools did was buy the material and then let the students go at it and see what they could put together. And I think with Billy's help, and if you really, if you walk on it, it is about as sturdy a bridge as you could possibly get. It goes over an area that during some parts of the year, when it's really raining, there's really, there is water underneath it, but for most of the part, it's kind of dry with a pond down one side or little wetlands down one side. And this is all above grade, all above, nice and flat and straight. So I think they did a phenomenal job, but I got to tell you, at least half a dozen of the neighbors just praised how well this project came out and their ability to use it. So it was a great project, yeah.
I'd like to add that the bridge was built outside of the wood shop, and man, was that thing heavy. And I want to commend the maintenance, your maintenance crew, that, I don't know how they ever got it over there.
They built wheels.
No, they did build wheels, and they got it over there, and that's when Billy and his class went over and put it all together afterwards and placed. That was amazing how they got that over there.
So again, I think the takeaway I have, at least from the financial side for the school committee and the taxpayers, is that, you know, every year, we're not fortunate enough to have, you know, a lot of funds left over because we really budget based on what we think our needs are going to be.
Yeah.
Last few years, we've been fortunate because of circumstances around COVID and around grants and stuff that we haven't spent, you know, to the level of our budget. And while we still give money back to the town, and that's obviously something that we pride ourselves in doing, we also pride ourselves in spending money on the curriculum to make sure that we can continue doing, you know, what we're charged with doing. And so, you know, again, I think this is a perfect example so you can see hands-on what your support of us doing that basically creates.
So in closing, I just want to go on record saying Billy has been just a tremendous asset to our department. As you can see what he had his kids do this year, and it's just been awesome. And I also want to thank all of you for your continued support, especially Bill. You've been key in this, and believe me, it's very much appreciated. The kids are getting nothing but the best. I mean, we're going to have the best wood shop around. People say to me, you still have a wood shop? Who's got a wood shop anymore? I said, well, we do. And we're going to have a very modern and safe wood shop. So Brent, come down.
I will.
Call for us.
Yeah, this time I'll call first. Next time I'll call first, instead of just skulking through, as I did before.
Trespassing and follow you.
There's different descriptors, I think, that might be apt. Can I ask, because we did, had to talk about this pretty frankly when it came to music and other things, what would be your estimate in terms of how long it's been since those things were replaced? Like, how old was the prior bandsaw and table saw, if you had to guess?
Well, when was the high school built?
Seventy-two.
That's, you got it.
Did I get it right, Joe?
Yep. And then I forgot to tell you, another thing that was replaced seven years ago in 2015.
The one thing that got replaced seven years ago in 2015 was the workshop bench tables.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
You're right, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
So we're talking that stuff was original to the school.
And most of that equipment was very commercial, you know, design, so it's very, very heavy-duty equipment. This is not like what I would have in my own home shop or something like that. First of all, it weighs a ton and a half, so to get it out is a chore in itself. But, so it is stuff that you anticipate getting a long life out of.
Yeah.
You know, so I think, again, and what we bought was similar in that it's not something we expect to last five years. It's something we expect to last a lot longer than that.
Right.
Just being up to the current requirements of OSHA and everything else, so.
Well, I appreciate the long view when it comes to that. We've talked about it with music equipment, we've talked about it in the arts, the kilns, and how long those have been lasting. We even talked about it in terms of the work that ELA is doing with all the curriculum that they'll do over the summer, because that's a long-term investment as well in their time. And I just want to thank you guys for being such good stewards of the town and having a program that's worth really putting money into, because it really, we have a comprehensive school system. It means we should be meeting kids' needs from all over. And I love, at a school like Foxborough, you can have a kid take an AP capstone and be in a jazz band and take Woods III. You know, it's pretty amazing. So I just want to say thank you so much for your stewardship of the program, and it means a lot to the community that it's here.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I add?
Please, Dr. Berdus.
I would also like to add two things. When I think about Billy in particular, he also teaches our wellness courses.
Really?
Yes. So he does both. And so he stepped up when we had that need, when John Arekia retired, and so we needed a partner there for Mr. DeBona. And so he had the construction background and the licensure in order to do that. So that allowed flexibility for us at the high school. So we were very fortunate to have Billy to be able to do that and to be the skill set that he had. So I think that that speaks volumes. It also speaks volumes when we think about the AutoCAD and everything that our students have been able to do when they do go out into the industry. They're amazed with what our students come out with. And the last part is that school is out in its summer, and thank you so much for being here this evening. It really speaks to the dedication of our teachers by coming here after school is already out.
Thank you. And good luck to you, Alice.
Thank you, Ralph. I have to say, one of my first memories of Teaching and Learning Highlight was the model that you guys made, and you came and presented, and I remember thinking, I didn't know at that time much about high school. I was doing K-8, and I was like, that's, we have that? That's amazing. So thank you for all you've contributed to over the years. I know the kids love your classes. I see why.
Man.
Okay.
Please, Ralph. How many, approximately, how many students every year go take, partner, you know, some courses?
I get about, in my CAD class, I get about 90. We can't house all the kids that sign up for wood shop. So, I mean, we could have 250 kids take our class.
You run wait lists in there, right? You run wait lists and stuff? I think somebody was saying, like, they have to kind of, it.
Yeah, this.
Yeah.
They fill up.
They fill up quick, I guess, is the thing, yeah.
You know, we can only do six periods a day in the wood shop, and we could easily fill that.
Yeah.
You know, plus all the CAD stuff, too, but it's impossible right now. So no, there's, there's.
That's a popular course, both, all of them.
Very popular courses, and with all the competition we get from other departments who come up with new electors every year, we always feel that, eh, they're going to go here and there, but no, we still get them.
That's nice. Well, and as you have other areas in the high school in particular, talking about project-based learning and things like that, they probably should spin by your rooms and see how it's done, so, because that's what you do.
Yeah, we do.
So. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say thank you. I mean, I've utilized that walkway, and my dogs are very happy for it. And it's really nice to see the practical aspects of something that you learn in school, and I think that that's great for students to see that.
Yeah.
As well as the community to see it.
Hundred percent.
So thank you so much, and I know my oldest has been through your class and loved it, and we really appreciate you having such a skills-based learning. It's really great to see that. So thank you very much, and thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Have a great summer.
Thank you.
You, too.
Take care. Thank you.
Next up, we have the superintendent's update. Dr. Berdus.
So this will be quite brief, but I thought it would be important just to say where we ended the year, where we've talked about COVID, and it was a nice way to end the year. At the close of school, we had four cases. They were in one school out of the five. We also saw the difference at the town level, too, with going down to a low risk rate. We were down at 5%. So it was a significant drop where we ended the school year, so that was exciting to see, and it kind of gave everyone that feeling of we're in a much different place. So going off for the summer was great. The other update that I had was on our installation of the peace pole.
Ah.
So that was installed last Friday. So I took a couple of pictures that I'll pass down there of the students for the Interact Club that you had approved for them to install that at the high school. It's right out front in that grassy area. And would really like to also commend our facilities crew for making the installation of that seamless. When they went out to install it, it was amazing how quick and easy that they could put, almost like a sleeve, over because of all of the prep work that had been done. And we also know that it's going to be nice and sturdy as far as being able to stay over time. So it was great to have that happen, and the kids came in, and now it'll be there for us the students enter in the fall.
I'm excited you guys got that in before, so the students, the seniors on the, or sorry, the upperclassmen could see it before the end of school.
Yes.
It's a nice way for the students to end the year.
Yeah. So Ashley Conlon, who is the president of the Interact Club, she's been great getting the students together. We've been going back and forth for, you know, all of this time, actually, and she organized it to where they could be there, and now it is installed.
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you so much. Wonderful. Anybody have any follow-up questions? Well, yay. Let's move on and to the introduction of our new IGO elementary school principal. Very excited about this. Ms. Morrissey, you want to come up? Thank you. And would somebody like to introduce?
I will, thank you. So as Danielle's coming up here to the front, I'd like to just make reference that we have Mike Stanton here and Robert Worth and Noel Hendrickson here to support her this evening as she's being introduced, so thank you for being here. Danielle comes to us from the Newton Public Schools, where she has years of experience as a principal in Newton and then as well as Boston, too, and really excited of what she's going to bring to the IGO Elementary School based on her background. It is extensive as far as principal and then as far as elementary education and teaching. When speaking with a number of people, they described Danielle as being very collaborative, a relentless focus on students, also very calm, and that she is one that has a great sense of humor. But the dedication to students and the work that she has done in her past, that has been something that even on the, we've been fortunate to have her visit, not just for her site visits, but as a number of days here in June to come be more in classrooms here for Field Day as well. And I'm just amazed, honestly, with seeing the number of students, and you remembered their names when they were going out to buses in the afternoon just after short stints within the classrooms. But it was clear from all of the things that we heard about you, from obviously the people we spoke to, and then from your interviews that you had here as well, that you're going to be a great fit for the IGO, and that the skills that you're going to bring are going to make a big difference for us as we move forward. We know that just from the area of PLCs, professional learning communities that she's worked, her interest in data, and some of the things that she's done in her own worked, her interest in data, and some of the things that she's done in her own schools that she'll be able to bring here to the IGO. And when we think about the population of her students, we know that, as an example, our English learners are growing population. The background that Danielle has with a much larger population of English learner students and coming also from another Title I school, that we're going to benefit from not only her expertise in the field, but also her collaborative approach and the work that is already starting to show with the teachers. She's met many of them so far. So, with that, I'll turn it over. Danielle, if you would like to just to give a little bit more about your background and your interests and coming to Foxborough.
Sure. Thank you. I'm really excited to be here. I'm looking forward to it. I think what really brought me here was the collaboration among colleagues, which is evident tonight with, you know, my new colleagues who I don't know very well being here to support me. I am really excited to be in a smaller community. I've only ever been in a large district. Except when I was a classroom teacher, I was in a school or a district that had three elementary schools. So, I feel like I'm coming home in that sense, and I'm really looking forward to the work that I will be doing with the staff and the team at IGO, as well as what we'll be doing as a larger community across the district. I don't know. Do you have any questions? I don't know.
I would just say thank you and welcome. We're really happy to have you joining us, so.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody else has questions.
I don't have a question, but I do want to thank you. I have heard about you by reputation for a while. I actually have family in Newton, and everybody's devastated, and we're... I apologized when I said I was from Foxborough. I was like, I'm sorry. But we're so, so lucky to have you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, my typical question that I've been asking this year, you answered extensively in our interview. So, well done on that. And it was one of the reasons I enjoyed your interviews so immensely. And having some familiarity with Newton as well, you're very, very highly regarded there, and they are sad to lose you. But I'm totally delighted that you're coming our way. I think all of our kids and our faculty will benefit. You certainly, your experience speaks volume to your ability to shepherd a community to their best place using both your own vision and their innate talents. So, it's, I'm just delighted that you chose Foxborough, so. Any others?
I just want to say welcome. We are, as everyone said, we're very excited that you've decided to join us and our community. It's going to be a very interesting year. A lot of new faces at the leadership level, so look forward to watching what all of you help create in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I would add to that, too. I think I'm just sorry that I won't get to work with you, because I've enjoyed getting to know you. And I can speak, much as Brent, having been on your interview committee, to all that you bring and the value that you add to our community. And I know it's going to be fun to watch you and cheer you on from the sidelines. I'll still be, I'll still be checking in.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And we have a former school committee member who was here for many, many years who always said, you know, "Thank you for choosing Foxborough and welcome to the Foxborough family." So, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for choosing me. I'm happy to be part of the Foxborough family.
It's a very good match. And principals and supporters, thank you so much for coming. It means a lot to have your support. I always, I really respect that you all come and support your colleagues, so. Welcome.
And I think she's going to end up staying and watching the rest of our meeting as well, too.
And, oh, yeah, and I'm, yeah, and...
We get much nastier as the evening goes on, so just be prepared.
It's mostly Sarah, though, so, yeah. Anyway, thank you very much and welcome. Next up, our Plan for Success. Dr. Berdus, do you care to emcee?
I will, but I'm going to have help by my colleagues here with Dr. Mello, Mr. Yukna. So, as you're very well aware, our Plan for Success, this is our first year of this plan, and we have a one-year action plan, and that we wanted to report out on progress to date for what has been accomplished this year. But none of it should really be a surprise, maybe a few things that we haven't talked about. But I think that's the beauty of all of the different reporting, agenda items that we have throughout the school year. So, the familiarity is because you're very much embedded in the work that we're doing throughout the year. So, what we thought we would do is go through each of the four pillars and highlight some of these updates that have been completed or that have been completed and ongoing. I'll start with the first pillar, and Mr. Yukna will assist in that when we talk a little bit more details that we think that the people at home that might be watching, that would be interested in. And then we'll move on to the second pillar, but we'll stop at each pillar and just see if there's any clarifying questions or comments. And what we've done here is, not that you'll be able to read the screen so much, it's more for talking points to move us along.
Sure.
And that is just a screenshot of what you're familiar with and what you have in your packet, which is describing the first pillar, which is facilities and infrastructure. And as you know, we have a number of strategic objectives for this four-year plan, and then we choose one to two of the initiatives to really focus on, on the plan to carry out during the school year. So, there you have two strategic initiatives under facilities and infrastructure. And so, when we look at the first one, we were looking at, obviously, anything related to COVID, continuing to maintain all of the high cleanliness and sanitation and the reporting out, and all of the things that have taken place here at every one of our meetings that have taken place throughout the year. So, that's continued. We've continued to use ESR funds to support those costs that are associated with the additional cleaning, with the other things, whether it's the, I've just, I've forgotten the name of those machines, Bill. You'll have to help me out here.
Misting?
The misting machines.
Oh, the, yeah, the disinfecting machines.
Yes, those have continued. So, from a budgetary standpoint, we've continued to add all of those things to the COVID funds, Bill. I don't know if you want to add anything specifically.
Well, I mean, and as part of that, again, more replacement of air filters, running the systems the way we do with more fresh air. Obviously, during certain times of the year, that pulls in a lot more pollen and stuff, so the filters need to be replaced more often. But we went into that cycle when we started with COVID, based on our studies that showed that our equipment ran well, but it only runs well if you maintain it well. So, we did use some of the ESR money, basically, to make sure we stayed on top of the equipment. We do the standard maintenance, that's just our protocol. But by being able to do filter changes, which may sound like a very simple thing, but it's actually a very expensive thing, when you look at the amount of filters we have and what they cost, especially during this timeframe where everything elevated in price. But being able to really change those on a more frequent basis than you're technically, you know, required to, we think also helped in keeping the building safe, too, so. And the fogging machines that we've used, obviously, we, I think we told you upfront when we bought a lot of the PPE equipment, we bought a lot more than most people did right up front, and so we've been basically using it up, and we still have stuff left. So, we've done well, and we did it at the right time, so I think we did pretty well there.
And then the other thing, I started to count and I lost count, the number of flu clinics that we had and the number of COVID vaccine clinics that we had. We had at least six of them, and they continued through the winter, and having those right at the IGO made it really convenient for families. The second benchmark here had to do with Synergy 911, and that is where we've been working in partnership with our public safety and the police department, specifically actually paying for the first assessments for the high school and the middle school. And that is something that we engaged in 11, 12 years ago for a thorough assessment of all of our facilities, looking at all of the things that come from hardware within the buildings. It also has to do with cameras and the placement of cameras and anything school safety-wise. That has been completed at the high school. We're in the process of the middle school. We are going to pay for the three elementary schools, and all of those assessments will be done by the end of the summer. Other things that go along with that are continuing to harden access to the buildings. And some of the examples, I'll let Bill give more of the specifics.
Yeah, so again, as part of the update you'll hear later on, too, and this is, again, with your blessings, is that we are looking to replace or actually add a vestibule at the high school, so that when you come in, it's a double-doored system with a schoolguard safety glass that you have to go through. We're doing the same thing at the middle school, where we are acquiring a number of new cameras for, as you know, we've bought hundreds of cameras throughout the district. But we always find a place where we think that we need to enhance our abilities. If you ever get a chance, you really, at some point, should see how this camera system works, especially within a building. I mean, Rob will see it if he hasn't already at the Burrell, but virtually, his secretary, our, you know, lead custodians and everybody in, back in our office, can actually watch outside, inside of the buildings as to what's going on in real time. And so, the camera systems have been phenomenal. And thanks to our tech department, the abilities of the cameras, the speed in which they can run, and we store all the images. So, if something does happen, we can go back and check and find out what it was. And a number of times, we've done that for the police to be able to prove something that's happened within a property site. So, the, you know, the other side of it is, we're going to replace all the exterior locks on the high school and the middle school. Again, this will put us on a single-key locking system. Our exterior lock, key locks only go to our top administrators. So, teachers don't need them because they have the fobs, and we've added those to the doors. We'll be doing a little bit more of that. The high school has a lot of exterior doors, well, I don't want to say a lot, has a number of exterior doors that are used constantly that are in bad repair. We'll be replacing all of those this summer as well and adding the key fobs to them, so that, again, they don't have to have a key to get in, they have to have the fob to get in. The fobs, we can control much better than you can control the key. I could shut somebody down in two seconds that has a fob. I can't go around finding the key that they might have had to get into a building. So, these are all methods of hardening all of our buildings. It's sad to have to talk about it, but I think we have made a number of steps over the years to continue to make that mode. And again, we use not only our police department, but the Synergy 911 to look at, you know, things that we might consider, quote-unquote, a weakness that need to be addressed. And again, using the resources we have through our own budgets without having to go back to the town for it.
And I think it's important to, we know, particularly in light of recent events that happened in the last month, this is not something that is far from a conversation. We are continually working in partnership, meeting regularly and have been for years, with Foxborough Police, with the fire department. We do all kinds of drills. We do off-site evacuation drills. You know that we did those back in the fall, where we actually take students off the campus for those kinds of drills, in addition to things where it's stay-in-place, whether it's a fire drill, having fire drills where you're blocking an exit and making them think, well, what do you do? Which direction do you go? So, that is part of our vernacular all of the time, continuing to look and harden access to buildings. This Synergy 911 and this full assessment is just another more formal assessment that we're engaging in. And I would just like to say one other thing on this is that on our school website, under the parent section, we have a lot of resources there that give definitions. Well, what does it mean, stay in place? What does it mean when you do an evacuation drill? So, there's a lot of resources that are there for parents, and at the same time, just to be able to answer questions, so we can reiterate that that is an ongoing conversation. So, I'm sorry, Brent, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that was exactly in keeping. All I was going to add, by way of anybody who is listening, is the thing I also like about the four things you were mentioning in terms of safety upgrades is they all have the added bonus of just giving a better educational experience and making the building more pleasant. I mean, when you come into a school, if you go through a double vestibule and you have access to the office, any visitors, outside folks, kids who need something, you know, you know who's coming and going. And that's very nice from a safety standpoint, but it's also just very nice from a student and family experience standpoint, as this is the same with the keys. And the cameras are used for far more than, you know, for emergencies that you get, you know, it's building damage, it's medical emergencies and things like that. Oh, my gosh, has anyone seen this kid? Yeah, he's over there, you know? And I just, I've always appreciated working in buildings that are like that. It's a much more pleasant working and learning environment.
And while it's taken time, I will say that in the, I guess I'm going on to 11 years now, it's been since I, you know, been here and even probably before that, that we have continually looked at investing in the schools this way. So, it's not based on a current event or something of that nature. You know, the fob system that we put in place probably five, six years ago now was really a key way to make it so people didn't, you know, place something in a door to keep it open and stuff like that, because they had the fob on them. All they had to do was scan it, the thing would open, and they could come through, versus worrying about whether or not they had the keys and, you know, fumbling around. So, and most people, a lot of the teachers will have the fob right on their next thing that they're carrying around, so they have their badge and their, and their fob ready to go. So, if they're going out to recess or if they're doing something like that, they have the access. So, it was a way of really making it so, I think Aaron Hayer used the term today, if you don't make it simple and easy, it doesn't get done. So, we try to make these safety things even simpler and easier each time for the people that have to use them, and we've been doing that for years. And, you know, you can never say you do everything, you know, that you'd like to make sure you got done, but you do as much as you possibly can, and you keep looking for the next thing to do.
Well, I think, I remember just from, at least from three of our standpoints, I recall you talking about both fobs and expanding that, and the high school entrance as far back as five or six years ago, and that's, it's just been on your radar and part of the plan. So, I really appreciate you all, again, stewardship.
I just have a question for clarification, if you don't mind.
No, please.
So, on the status, excuse me, so the completed winter 2022, a Hearn underway, Burrell-IGO Taylor, is that the planning or is that the implementation that is in progress?
It's in progress, actually, to install.
Okay, so the implementation of it. Okay. That's what I thought, and then as I started to read it more, I'm like, are we still in the planning phase? I just wanted to understand it.
No, please.
Thank you so much.
And other things that you see here, another example would be like safe arrival. So, that's a matter of a student through attendance, within 30 minutes of the school day, if they're not here in school, an automated message is being sent home to families. So, having that and not getting a disruption in the office, so that was another implementation, you know, from a software standpoint, people. Are there mistakes sometimes when there's like, I called them in? But we would rather it be the opposite.
Yes.
And then say, okay, no, they're here.
Absolutely.
I was going to say, I was seeing that there's something else that's being implemented in August of 2022, and that's the professional development opportunities?
Yes. So, we're actually going to start with our administrators in August, and that is when we've had professional development for teachers, when it has to do with if we have critical incidents or any kind of safety training that has to do with lockdowns, as an example. So, we've philosophically moved away from having lockdown drills with students, it's with staff, because they're the ones that are going to be in charge of the students. And we've found from the work that we've done and what we've learned is, from a research standpoint, that the trauma that it brings to students, it's not, it's not the best way to go. It's the staff that we need to train. So, we actually met with the chief and others this morning. Again, we're planning a full training with administrators in August, and then that will be carried out with staff over the course of next school year. But it's really important to have all the information from the new assessments from Synergy 911, particularly where you have three out of five new principals getting to know their buildings, getting to know their staff, and being able to set that in motion. But it's really starting with the top and having, when principals are doing their meetings with staff, that they have the latest information based on these assessments.
And I think a lot of, we do do a lot of training still, the fire drills, you know, other things, but they all have the similar concept for the student.[1701.21] other things. But they all have the similar concept for the student. The student understands that, you know, to follow the directions, the staff is telling them what to do. So what we're hoping is again, by not, you know, alarming the children, but having those other practices that are constantly going on, they understand that they're taking the direction for the teachers as they go through the process, so.
And it needs to be developmentally appropriate. So, you know, as an example, at the high school or middle school level, having a stay in place is very common. It might be that somebody has been moved out and we need to clear the hallways because we have an ambulance that's come to the school, and we want to give privacy to the student. So we have stay in place. If you look on our website and you look at the definition, you'll see that that means teachers are still teaching, but no one is out in the hallway. Some of the other electronic programs that they put where electronic passes at the high school is something new that's this year at the high school as well, when they're getting passes where you know how many people are going to the bathroom. They have to do that electronically. You can see the data from that. And at the elementary level, you know, we've, we've had a squirrel before that got into the building. And so we had to stay in place because we needed to get the squirrel out of the building.
Squirrel watch.
So those are the kinds of things at the elementary level you're talking about with students, that sometimes you have a stay in place because we need to be able to keep others safe. And in that case, it was a squirrel. So that's kind of a synopsis of pillar one. You have a lot more details that are there, but those are the big highlights, I think.
Good. Thank you very much. That was very helpful.
Thank you.
So pillar two, which is teaching, learning and pedagogy, I think Dr. Mello is going to do the majority of this. A lot of it you've already heard because of the presentations that we've had at school committee. So we're just going to go through and hit some of the highlights.
Yes, I think we have done a lot of presenting this information already. So I won't belabor the points. I'll just summarize the key things. Just for anyone who's tuning in at home, just a reminder that our focus has been around the multi-tiered system of supports, which is really a framework that's designed to provide different levels and tiers of support to prevent any challenges that students may have for all students, to intervene with some students or extend with some students who may need it, and then to remediate with only a very small group of students. So there are tiers one, two, and three in the multi-tiered system of supports. So we've been working on developing those at every building. And you'll remember earlier this year, we talked about our district-wide multi-tiered system of supports committee. We use that book that's on the screen, the MTSS Startup Guide, to guide us in doing a self-assessment of where we were. So we did an audit of our current building and district-wide practices. We developed our definitions. It's very important, if we're trying to all achieve the same thing, that we all define it the same way. Very important. We looked at our current protocols, because as we noted at previous school committee meetings, we had some of these systems in place, but they ran a little bit differently, and they were called different things. We had them at every level, but they were not consistent. And then we looked at the resources that we had around assessment and intervention that we could use to inform our teams. And then you'll remember, we started in August with some great PD with Dr. Adolf Brown, and that was really related to the whole child. And thinking about, the thing with MTSS is we're looking not just at academics, we're looking at social emotional supports that students need and also behavioral. So we started with him, and then we had Ken Williams come in and really work on our PLC process with us. So all the, as we said last time, all the dots are connecting. We talked about our student support team. And then in October, we did an overview of MTSS for everybody with Lori Kazna, and that really drilled into those systems. And then in January, that's where we saw, because the Borough and the Igo, I mean, excuse me, the Taylor and the Igo were in the DESI multi-tiered system of supports, UDL Academy, that's a mouthful. They had professional development through the academy, and the rest of the district was still focused on MTSS and universal design for learning. And as a reminder, universal design for learning is really just an approach to planning instruction that plans with barriers in mind, and what barriers can we remove? So we just had a great day of professional development today at our institute. We talked about specifically barriers around our English language learners, and what are the things that we need to do to support. So it's like that. It's not something extra. It's just planning so that we can know that we're supporting all students. And it's a lever for equity as well. So he worked on us. You'll see the crown a lot in Foxborough. Ken Williams talks about those essential standards that every student needs to meet, no matter what, calls that the crown, that we need to grow every student up to the crown so that they're tall enough to wear it. And it's not for some students, it's for every student. So identifying those essential standards as grade levels, as content area teams, and departments was really the first step. So we started to do that. We also put some scheduling changes into place. So there's a sample of the schedule, and I know that Taylor School, Mike supported this there, and at the Igo School, we did it as well. So each day of the cycle was a PLC for classroom teachers. And then every fifth time that that came around, they did their student support team. And then three times a year, they did data teams led by our curriculum directors and our literacy and math specialists. This worked extraordinarily well. There was a lot of foresight and intentional planning, and I know that Robert will be doing this next year at the Borough as well, where it was planned so that teachers, when they arrived at school at 8:30, they would begin their PLC, so there were no subs required. So we wouldn't lose that PLC time if we didn't have subs. And it backed up to a special, so that the specialist teacher, so if it was, if it was music, we would have the music teacher there in the morning to do morning meeting through responsive classroom, and then bring the kids right to music. So the teachers had that little extra time, and it really allowed them to just not have to do subplans, really focus on the work. That worked incredibly well. So we're excited to bring that to, so that's the elementary version. The middle school already has a great schedule for this. And the high school, as you know, we're in transition with NIAS. One of the things that was important, though, was for each level, because their systems were a little bit different, to really look and say, okay, what is, do we have an opportunity that functions like a PLC right now? If so, what is it called? Maybe it was called the professional learning community, because we had them. Maybe at the middle school, it was called a cycle meeting or a content meeting. So we really wanted to get on the same page with our language, so that we're all saying the same thing. So we created these roadmaps for each level to say, okay, what do you have currently? What will the new structure be called? And what's better and newer about this new structure? So how is it being enhanced? Because it wasn't the same thing with the new name. We wanted to be clear that there's a little bit more structure and form going into those. And then we clarified some things about the tiers, so that people would understand the difference between tier one, tier two, and tier three, as an example. Someone, a student who may need tier two, might need some intervention. And that can be delivered not only by a specialist or a special educator, it can be delivered by the classroom teacher. So it was really figuring out those roles, and also clarifying that tier three might need intensive support, but it might only be for a short time, and it doesn't mean special education. There was a lot of learning, and there's still ongoing, a lot of learning around that. So these documents were really just meant to guide people.
Question question.
Sure.
How does, or if it doesn't yet, do you envision the SSTs, the student support teams, and we have a definition here in the packet, which I greatly appreciate, thank you, I need those, how are they different at the elementaries versus, you know, all the way up to secondary and high school?
Right now, at the secondary level, they are still in more of a SWAT model. So they don't, that, that one is more focused on social emotional at this time. The SST at the elementary and the middle school level, there are specific forms that we use. So we are setting a goal around something that we're looking for to support the student for intensively. And then we have some interventions in place and monitor progress for six weeks. The structures and the schedule that are in place at the elementary and middle school really support that happening. The schedule and structures that are in place at the high school right now don't yet support that fully. So we're still working on their older model, which is SWAT. It's not to say these supports aren't happening, they just don't have the same level of formality with the paperwork and fidelity. Yes, thank you, that's the right word, yet, because they're also in the middle of the NIAS accreditation and getting a new principal. So the, it's two slides ahead, so I don't want to jump, but the DESI Academy, next year, we will see the Borough and the Ahearn join the Academy. Hopefully by that following year, things are more situated at the high school, and then they can partake in the Academy. But we are actively working with the new high school principal and the admin team there to see how can we get a strong PLC structure in place that's sort of guaranteed for our teams next year, if it's possible. Because right now, it works where maybe four out of five people in the department can do it. But there's things like duties that take them off of that. And so it's a little more tricky, I'm sure you understand, at the high school. But I think that's the main differences. I don't know if you have anything to add.
No, I think that it's really leveraging where we can, and then enhancing where we need to enhance.
Right. And the main thing is continuing with the professional development around universal design for learning, because most everything should happen in tier one. It should happen right in the classroom. And if you do better tier one instruction and you're more successful, then you have less of a need for SST and BBST.
And it, as we've said in here before, if you have clarity of purpose, and everyone's on board, and you're moving forward in the elementary levels, then.
Correct.
And we fully anticipate through the accreditation process with NIAS, with scheduling, to see, it's been something we've been talking about, being able to, again, leverage what we have, enhance them, and that recommendations, it would not surprise me to see a difference for a recommendation in scheduling. Still look different.
Nice.
So looking back on this year, it was actually, it's really interesting to do this update, because, well, we did actually a lot of things that I hadn't remembered that we did.
Realized that you could.
So, yeah, we had added this literacy screener. Initially, it was really, we had mentioned this, it was, you know, DESI said we had to have a dyslexia screener in place, but it became so much more than that. It is truly our literacy screener now across K through eight, and it gives us that data that we need to support our PLC work. So it has been wonderful to have FastBridge in place. We're still learning about everything that it can do and all the interventions that it has, but we've had our literacy specialists working really hard to create easy access for teachers to those interventions, and continuing to train the teachers on how best to leverage that data. So that has been a good upgrade for us. When we were in the ELA curriculum review, the high school was very interested in learning more, but because again, it was a dyslexy, dyslexia early literacy screener, we thought. But now that we've seen it, it actually has applications all the way across.
And we're usually late on, meaning when I say we, I mean Foxborough.
When we discover it, yes.
I mean, all of education is pretty late on properly diagnosing that.
Which I think is why DESI put in a mandate, so that everybody has something.
If you don't mind my asking for a little more expansion there, are there other things that you've heard from your staff or leadership that, that have been pleasant surprises or just surprises, I guess, by implementing that stuff across the board?
With FastBridge?
Yeah.
I think one of the surprises was, we relied so much on the DRA, and feel free to jump in, Mike, if you want to add anything. We relied so much on our DRA, which is administered by teachers. And so there's always that human element of error. So I think in what we are seeing with FastBridge is it's a, it's a different way to look at the data. And one could say, and I think teachers have said, when you remove that variability of the test administrator, it's probably more reliable and valid. That said, there were some questions about the readability in certain levels. So we had to get some of the hiccups out. Overall, I think they like having access to the data. One of the things that was challenging for them was accessing the interventions, which is why we have the literacy specialists pulling, fewer clicks pulling it down, making folders, making it really easily accessible. As you said, if it's not easy, people won't use it. So we needed to make it more user-friendly. On the plus side, because it's under the illuminate umbrella, which we've been using for years, it seemed like a, we still need, again, a little bit more PD, but it wasn't a massively hard lift for people. We had a lot of change this year, but they managed it incredibly well. Did that answer your question, Brent?
And then some, thank you, characteristically.
So the DESI academies, I already mentioned the UDL Academy that Igo and Taylor were in, but I neglected to mention the SEL Academy, which is our district-wide team. As a reminder, these are three-year academies. So this year, the elementary schools that were involved did 15 hours of intensive PD for all teachers, an additional 25 hours of intensive PD for admin and coaches, that's our literacy specialists and math specialists. We also included our digital learning coaches on that, and some of our, we have special, I don't think we had special educator on that. The SEL Academy, as a district-wide team, is expanding a little bit, and that's also a three-year involvement. And that one is, falls under Corey's leadership, so I'm not as attuned with how many hours, but it definitely was a lighter lift than the UDL Academy. They met less frequently, but they have a lot of great work going on there. And we're excited to get Borough and Ahearn involved in that.
How many, how many folks does that amount to that you were having to go through all that PD?
On the, on the UDL ones?
No, the SEL.
The SEL one, I think it was.
Eleven members.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah.
Cool.
I was gonna say 10, so I was close.
And that's across all three buildings?
Correct. And also some district leadership, like Kim McDowell is really taking the lead on that, yeah.
Thank you.
And then we had our data teams this year, which was part of our structures. And you had a teaching and learning highlight. You will remember that Noel Hendrickson came, and Karen McKinnon and their teams came and shared their data protocol. And that bottom graph in the lower left is looking at achievement gaps of our different student groups. That's something we can look at in a very easy way now and keep our finger on the pulse of. That is unbelievable data that comes out of illuminate, that I think is very powerful and very actionable. So having the structures in place to do something with it has been a game changer for us. So overall, when we look at our procedures district-wide, this is just a little, what did we do this year? Just looking at it across the board. So you can see a lot at the elementary, no surprise, they were in the academies, right? A little bit less, but still a lot at the middle school, and then less at the high school, because we knew that they were, had other endeavors this year. That being said, they're working really hard to integrate and fully implement the district curriculum accommodation plan, the D cap, which you've also heard about, and really working to learn more about the essentials that we talked about, and thinking about universal design for learning. So everything is well underway, I think I would say. I think we made more progress than I even thought we would this year. So it was nice to look back. It was a moment of feeling proud of all the work that all of these stakeholders did collectively, and the power of collective efficacy. Anything else to add, Dr. Burdos?
No, I just, to reiterate, really being surprised. I think at the beginning of the year, there was a lot of anxiousness, and how are we going, particularly with the academies? And it was, it was a heavy lift. And the principals having to really figure out how to make it work when they're losing things like staff meeting times. That's hard, when you have staff meetings once a month, and you're having to have some of that time co-opted away. And it was, how are we going to do this? And at the end, it was done, and a lot of work was accomplished.
And one thing that is an outcome of the academies that you'll hear about next year is we were able to send, anyone that was on that coaching, those five-hour coaching intensive, we could pick two people to go to be trained to actually run a UDL 101 graduate course here. So they are in the process of developing that, and we will have that onsite for our staff next spring, along with some other great things, some book studies and some Twitter chats.
What do you infer, because that is a lot, that is a lot of time, and especially in a year that people probably universally felt was hard. What, what do you think was driving the, I mean, how did the staff, I guess, respond to all that extra time? Was it willing? Was it just like they knew it was part of the goal, or?
I think, I, Mike could add to this. I will say a couple of things. One, before we entered the academy, I enlisted the feedback of some teachers in another district who had been part of the academy. And they created video messages for our teachers to say, this has totally transformed the way I've done my work. They were excited about it. So they would know it just wasn't one more thing, and it wasn't going to be like, oh, my gosh, I have to do all this extra. That was one. The second one was, when you have students coming off of a pandemic, you have more needs than you've ever had. So you're eager for, our teachers are always eager to learn. So they're eager for the tools and the systems that are going to help them better support students. So I think their minds were very much there. I'm not going to say that it wasn't a lot, because I think it was. I don't know, Mike, do you want to add?
I think it started with their hearts, in the sense of having them understand the why.
Sure.
In that, you know, at all three of our schools across the district, we talk about all means all, but we have those achievement gaps. And so really trying to address that and taking an honest look at ourselves and the practices. And, you know, at the elementary level, they teach all subjects. So there's never a year off in a curriculum review or a cycle, they have something. So as a team, we were cognizant of that, but we wanted them to see that this all fell underneath the umbrella of MTSS. It wasn't a different initiative. It all went to the same place, which was student achievement for every child. And it was powerful, and it was rewarding, I think, as a principal, to hear the teachers start to use the language, to talk about barriers. Oh, you know, I have to remove this barrier. We had Ken Williams come in one time, I think Allison might have been with him, he visited a classroom, and he came inside, and we had a student, and she just lit up when she saw who he was, because they had been talking about the crown. So we woven the crown, we woven all these messages, so it was consistent. But I think, you know, at the elementary level, we're blessed with teachers who just truly care and work so hard. So it was a heavy lift, and I think, you know, losing, even for myself, it was my second year at Taylor School, even though it was my 10th year in the district, finding that time to connect with staff. And it just took a different route and a different pathway, because we were committed to the MTSS Academy. But I think the dividends and the outcomes have really put us up a position for success moving forward. And I can tell, it's changed practice, it's changed mindset and philosophy. And we've had some, you know, honest conversations, the PLC and some of the vehicles and structures that we put in place we've never had before. And so as a principal, it's exciting to see, no one minds working hard when you get the results. And I think that's what we're starting to see, is that, you know, we've always worked hard, we've had results, but truly is this every single child now in Foxborough that we can say we're doing our best, and we're putting some new practices in place to make that a reality.
Well, it's ambitious, and I, and challenge sometimes opens up that opportunity, and I'm very grateful for you all taking an integrated approach to that, because if you don't, it can end with silence, and teachers returning to their room. So I'm very, very grateful for your thoughtful integration of all this stuff.
Yeah, we're very proud. Thank you.
So are we okay to move on to pillar three?
Please, yeah.
I'm excited about pillar three.
Rob always likes pillar three.
So as a reminder for those that might be listening, pillar three is wellness. And we really looked at the social emotional learning programs and supports that we have for students as the SEL Academy, it overlaps here. And then you saw most recently with the wellness committee, and really connecting the wellness committee in a different way than what we've had in the past. So that's what I think has been really exciting, to see so much that is really interwoven across different programs and activities and supports. But the, the goal was to establish that committee, and we did. It's the first year of three with the academy. There's 11 members on that team. And as Allison had said, Kim McDowell has really taken the lead on that, and she's done a fantastic job. And Kami Tadoldi has also kind of been her partner there. So you have cross-content curricular areas. They came to, like even one of our most recent administrator meetings, and talked about, well, here's what we've accomplished, here's where we want to go, what do we need to do from a school level? a school level and the supports and from the principal's standpoint of each of the buildings. So you have a lot of collaboration, and that's when you're going to get traction as far as what's been accomplished and where we need to go from here. So part of that, we, there's a team of about 30 of us, the first week of August, that we're going to be attending an SEL Academy that's through Harvard, that will connect this work, but it's in addition to that, but it'll be very much interwoven. And I think it speaks volumes when it's the first week of August and we have as many people that are saying, yes, sign me up, I want to be a part of that. That really does speak highly of the caliber of the work that's been done and the people that are involved. And most importantly, it's to support our students, particularly when we know their needs are greater than they ever have been before. Launching the SEL screener through Panorama, we've talked about that here at this table. We had two administrations of that this year. We'll move to three administrations of that next year. That was one where parents could opt their students out if they so chose. And many times after having a conversation, there were very few parents that came forward to principals to ask. But once they understood what the screener was about, then they're like, oh, okay. When we think about self-regulation, what do I do if I really get upset? Those kinds of decisions that they're making as well, that data helps us to identify when we think about the castle competencies, when it comes to whether it's self-management, the decision-making, all of, I can't recall all of the five of them at the top of my head, but it's a, it's a matter of really helping to build those. And then how do we also build those competencies across content areas? So it really is woven throughout and not something that's layered on top.
If you, like, how many roughly people were opting out?
I think there were six that I knew of when I talked with principals.
Good.
Okay. Mike, did you have any? Yeah. I checked in with all of them afterwards.
It's not 20% of the district.
Oh, no.
No, it's, it's.
It was like six individuals. And then once the conversation took place, they realized, oh, okay, you know, this is what this actually is. Because it was new. And anytime you have something that's new. And what's also, I realized that we neglected to put down here were five separate sections on the K-12 Culture and Climate Survey where we added those competencies. And you had about four or five questions under each one of those competencies, which was for parents, students, and teachers. And that data, once we receive that this summer, is going to be really helpful to triangulate it with some of this other data as where we move forward, whether it's with the academy and the work that we're doing, with the SEL curriculum that we're going to be moving forward with next year. It's all going to really tie into the work that we've been doing, but how do we then move that even more forward? Scheduling, you heard a lot about that through the Special Education Program update by Mr. Michael Azic earlier this spring. So I won't, you know, spend a lot of time there because we had a very lengthy presentation that evening. And then I think the most important piece here is, when we think about social-emotional learning, it's something that we focused on for years, whether it was through caring school communities through our program, we've implemented responsive classroom, that's now being implemented more, we're expanding that to the middle school. So it's work that we've done, but we're now, we're going to have more data to be able to support any of the actions that we take. And then being a part of the academy itself is going to enhance that work and provide resources that we have not had in the past.
When Ken Williams was with us earlier today at the PD Institute, he said, that's the part that's been left out is the learning and the social-emotional learning. So you have the data, you can see what the barrier is, you can remove the barrier, and then they have access to the learning. That's the piece. So you want to support their social-emotional needs, but we also want to tie it to the learning piece.
Yeah, for the purpose of.
Correct.
Thank you.
So anything else on pillar three to add?
I don't think so. I think you covered it all. Next year, we'll have more formality in the PLCs to where we're looking at that Panorama data during some of the PLCs. So it'll be math, literacy, and the SEL. So it will truly be the MTSS and the whole child.
That's nice.
So the fourth pillar, diversity, equity, and inclusion, that focus this year was looking at some of our hiring practices using an equity lens, also looking at our DEI Committee and setting goals. That process was one that took, as far as setting the goals and really the direction you wanted to go, it took longer than what I thought that it would, but the work and the time, when we meet monthly until 5:00, and I'm looking at the clock and nobody's stopping. The conversations are so rich in the work that we're doing and really trying to identify where we need to go with those goals. I thoroughly enjoyed that committee. You know, Mike sits on that committee too, and the conversations, and just really the investment of where are we looking at our equitable practices, looking at the data that we have, and when we're looking at access, and then our inclusivity pieces, where are we needing to make changes? So what you have here on the status is a couple of things that we know. When we go back to diversity and equitable practices in hiring, we've done some things different. We know that in being a suburban community, it's harder for us. We, our population has become more diverse, but our faculty and staff is not as diverse as some of our student populations that are growing. And when we look at diversity, that comes under, you know, many different things. We look at diversity as far as cultures that come through. We look at our student population, we look at what people are bringing as far as their backgrounds. So we wanted to enhance that. Handshake was an online platform that we added to be able to reach out to college students at different colleges for recruiting, as well as alumni. So it was a different way to be able to do these online forums and to say, these are the positions that we're looking for, and try to reach audiences that we haven't in the past. We also joined the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. That is a partnership that many districts in Massachusetts belong to. It provides additional resources when it comes to outreach for hiring practices. We have a commitment on our end. We have to have someone that's going to attend monthly meetings that are after school. So Patricia Timmons, our coordinator for the Metco program, she's going to be our representative, meeting with them. They held a symposium. We had a number of people that went to that this year. So it's really looking at how can we try to diversify our faculty and staff, because SchoolSpring is like one platform that we use. And we needed to be able to see, how could we reach other audiences? And something, another example would be even with Indeed, when we think about our technology staff, they're not looking at SchoolSpring. We've had a number of secretarial positions. We needed to reach out and do something other than SchoolSpring in order to hire, when we think about like Eileen Warnock in the Guidance Office retiring. We had Jerry Lezowski retiring at the middle school. So those key positions that are so important, they're not looking at platforms like SchoolSpring. So we needed to really be able to diversify where do the platforms that we're using for hiring practices. So those are just some examples there. As far as the committee itself, the goals, not that you can read them very well up there, but we have a number of goals that are focused on what we're doing within the education realm, but then at the same time, what are we doing for students and families? So we talk a lot and used a lot of data to really evaluate where our gaps might be. Something to the example of, if you had discipline referrals on buses, what are the discipline referrals? Are they coming from the same buses? Are they, are they coming, do we see a difference of males versus females? Is it something that we're missing that we need to be able to provide training for our bus drivers? Like, looking at data that people don't even think about. I'm using that as an example, because that's important for us to look at it and to look through in equity lens. Identifying ways that we can be more representative in our curriculum, you see that through when we talk about the literature that's being used in the ELA Curriculum Review. You've got a lot of that, where we're having females versus males in different areas, whether, you know, you think about scientists in the past, you might see white males. Well, there's a lot of women scientists. Who are those pioneers? So there's curriculum pieces. Yes, we've tried to expand things as far as library selections, whether it's books at all levels, but that really is just a very small example. It really is more within our curriculum review, the data that we're looking at, unpacking that, looking at the K-12 Culture and Climate Survey, when we're asking those questions for social-emotional learning. We're asking about, are we a welcoming environment? Or we have new families that are moving? And a couple of examples that came up, for families that moved here during the pandemic, and they were in a hybrid mode, or they were before even that, they didn't have the opportunity to meet people. So particularly if they are English learners, what are we doing as far as, and we kind of called it a welcome wagon, but what are those supports that we can provide to families and connect families that may not know, well, you speak Russian, there's another Russian family, how can we facilitate that between families? So those are some of the goals that, that we're looking to enhance, but really implement in a different way going forward. One of the other pieces is looking at curriculum, like you see as an example up there, there's no place for hate at the middle school level. Looking at expanding responsive classroom, when we think about, that's our SEL curriculum for the elementary that we're expanding, but there's a lot of opportunity there when we think about diversity, equity, inclusion, for the inclusivity, and how are we connecting our students?
I think we may have also neglected to include, as in thinking about inclusive practices, all the work that we did this year with Dr. Lisa Decker and co-teaching. There was a ton of work around inclusive practices, and lots of teachers went through that training, lots of teachers implemented the model, and that will continue into next year.
And so just to give you an example, when we're thinking about equity, and we're thinking about bias, and we're stereotyping, so here's an example of an activator from one of our DEI Committee meetings. So you're asked, you're going to be on a 12-hour flight, and you're given the option to sit next to an ex-convict, a basketball player, or a former high-achieving student. Who do you choose to sit next to, and why? And so you think about, who do you see as that person? Because we're getting to identity. Identity is so important. We all have a different identity of what we bring, based on, I mean, when I think about, I'm from the South. I have, my identity is very different than even some of my family members that are, you know, born in Massachusetts. When I think about heritage, and my, you know, father-in-law being 100% Greek, and those kinds of things are part of our identity and who we are, and being able to celebrate who we are in learning about our colleagues and our students and building relationships, and we know how important that is. And so this particular activity, teachers went up and they, they put up a sticky note, because they had in their image, in their mind, an image of what that might be. So they might go and say, I'm, I don't want to sit next to a basketball player, because I already feel like I don't have enough room when I'm sitting on a plane. And basketball players might be, you know, 6'7", and I'm, I'm not going to have that much room. Or they have a thought of, when they think, well, I don't want to sit next to someone who's been, you know, in prison in the past, or the former, I'm going to immediately go to the former high-achieving student. So it's really digging into, we need to get to know who people are and what they bring, and to be able to celebrate our differences and the inclusive nature of that. So this particular activity was one when you went through, is Nelson Mandela, who, you know, that's not what you would have thought. So that's about us really digging in and getting to below the surface and getting to know who our students are, who our faculty are. When you think about the basketball player, Nate Heinz, he's, you know, he's an Olympic basketball player, but he's not who you would have thought of necessarily. And the last one kind of speaks for itself. But the point is, we have to be able to think about bias and what we bring. And when we think about students and the students in front of us, we've got to be able to remove the barriers, so they all can reach that crown. And if we can look at the data and we can tease that out, and to see who's taking upper-level classes if it's at the high school, who's being able to meet whatever standards, and if they're not able to meet those standards, what are we doing to support all students? So that equity lens and that inclusive work that we're doing through co-teaching, that's when we're going to get to when we say all means all.
No, you, you said it. That's, that's a great way to end right there, because that's what it is.
I, I'll start. So again, I thank you all for the thoroughness. I'm really having trouble with grammar tonight, I apologize. And what I would encourage is for, you know, anybody that might be watching, or anyone that watches, that is interested in what's going on in the district, all of this is available, or will be available, on the school's website. There is so much information in here. When we first talked about, we revisited Plan for Success earlier this year, we talked about how clearly it's in, that was in a C's, I was going to say God bless you, but that was in a C's, sorry.
Thank you.
Talked about how it, the plan feels like it's right for where we need to be as a district and where we want to go as a district. I really encourage, you know, everybody in the community to look at the update, look at the plan overall, but look at the update and understand all of the work that is happening, and all of the successes and opportunities that are being addressed with this. So, yeah, that's just a plea to the general public, I guess. So plug. Plug is better than plea. Thank you. So thank you guys for, for the update. Really appreciate it.
And that's a good reminder that we will upload this one-year update to the same place where we have the plan and everything else.
It's there. I mean, I just, sometimes we hear from people that they don't know what's going on, or they feel like the schools don't communicate about what's going on. Information like this is there. And it's, it's relatively easy to find. And if you're interested and want to celebrate the work that's being done, it's there for you to celebrate it. Okay, done.
No, you're fine. Can you tell me if there are questions?
Thank you for all your work and the presentation. It is so thorough. Interrupts point that people will ask questions a lot, not always say. There's so many resources. They're right on the website. All the resources are right there. And I think Foxborough does a really good job in sharing that. You just have to, sometimes you have to go on, you have to search, you have to look, or reach out to someone and ask. But thank you.
And the, yeah, and to that, and a lot of the terms that are used within here are defined at the head of each pillar, and it's just a wonderful intro for people who want to get up to speed in terms of what's going on in the district. And it's considerable.
So from here, we'll be working on our next action plan for next year, for the 2223 school year, looking at what, anything from this year that needs to be built on, and then identifying those other strategic objectives that will be focused on for FY23.
And I would just like to say, what I loved, kind of, not only hearing all that's gone on and how that's going to build on each other for the future, but just hearing everybody sort of be able to, through this process, realize how much you guys have done and you've accomplished. And that's why this exercise isn't just good for us, the school committee, to kind of become, you know, make sure that we're informed and recognize what's going on, but it's also great for administration, for teachers, for everybody to really realize and kind of get that affirmation of, you guys have done a lot over the last couple of years in spite of the pandemic. There's a lot that was accomplished here. And so thank you very much for not losing sight of that, because, you know, we do hear from, you know, a lot of other districts, not necessarily in Massachusetts, but all over the country, where things have kind of been let go and not keeping the eye on the ball. So thank you very much for doing that.
Again, I appreciate the integration. I mean, if you look at, you have your fourth pillar there being diversity, equity, and inclusion. And as Mr. Stanton and everyone else has mentioned, there are various pieces in both pillar two and pillar three are heavily integrated within that in terms of all meaning all. So when everything's working together, it's really fun to work in education.
May I just add one last thing?
Always.
The part that has been so exciting for me personally, when, because you've seen all these presentations, when it's the curriculum review for the visual arts or ELA, or whether it's the special ed update, when you hear that language that's coming from here, we want this to be a working document. It's not something that we created to be able to say, we have a plan. It truly is a document that you are living and that you're hearing back and people talking about it. And so I think that's, that's the greatest compliment. I think that Allison and I have really felt that people are doing it, and it's embedded through all they're doing.
The last thing I'll add off that very timely comment, Dr. Berdus, is, and I've said this before, none of this is possible without your faculty, your administrative team, and really everybody having a lot of trust in each other, and trust to both collect and then report out the data, words and all, and take an honest look at it, and then you. And then you, it's only through taking an honest look at the data that you actually come up with something that's worthwhile and actionable like this. So I'm always excited when the culture and climate survey comes out and to look at that and all the other data that you share with us. And I just appreciate that from the top down, all the way through the classroom teachers and frankly, the students, they're used to looking at data and talking about their learning honestly. So, and that only happens if we have a lot of trust in each other. And I'm grateful that we, I believe we all do. Anything else from the committee or administration on this? Okay, let's move on to the middle school report cards, which we had started the other night. So discussion on special area report card changes. I believe we've had some updates in our thinking.
We've had some movement in our thinking, yes.
Well, Dr. Mello, could you update us, please?
Yes, I think it was actually very serendipitous that we waited to vote on this because in further conversation with Ms. Frazier, Mrs. Arkasha, and Mr. Doldi, I think we mentioned last week that the middle school aspires to have a standards-based report card. However, that's going to take some time for us to get to. There are a lot of things that have to be in place in all the different content areas to support that. Now, that being said, our elementary has had a standards-based report card for quite some time. So it makes sense when we roll it up that the parents will be used to it if we roll up fifth grade and then sixth grade. So as we tease that out a little bit more, wanting to get away from the pass fail for all the reasons that were shared by the committee, what has been proposed that they would prefer to do is to pilot the standards base in just the arts, just the visual and the musical arts, which seems to make a lot of sense. They're proposing, which is attached to your memo, using the same standards that the elementary currently have on their report card, with the addition of one in each area. So demonstrate studio habits of mind would be the next step up from middle school. And again, this is grades five and six, and those are defined below because we know in education, we love to use ambiguous terms that nobody knows what they mean. We have defined it underneath. And then on the music side, demonstrates preparation for class. And I have to say, it was really helpful in speaking with Ms. Doldi, why she feels passionately about this. She said, currently, if a student comes to music and they always have their instrument and they always practice and they're always prepared, they pass. And if there's another student who regularly forgets their instrument and doesn't practice enough, they rarely fail, right? So there's really no way to give parents feedback on how their students are doing. And that's the beauty of a standards-based report card is that it shows you exactly where they are along the continuum. So what they would like to do is to try that next year. Ms. Frazier is very excited about that opportunity. So that is where we are now. I think I captured it all, Dr. Berdus, but if there's anything else. So this, they would like you to vote on this because they would like to be able to do this to start the school year. So I don't know, Dr. Berdus, if that's something that, if you want to jump in here, the the performance indicators would stay the same as the elementary. Again, it's all outlined, attached to the memo. Do you have anything to add?
No, I think that, you know, some of the logistical pieces is what we needed to check into because the elementary is an example. It's a separate report card. And so we talked about that at first. Now you have two pieces of paper, but then it's all online for middle school. So we don't have that piece. It's just within Power School.
So I'm sorry, are we, because it's listed here as information only. Are you looking for an action tonight?
Yes. I caught that when I was sitting here. I'm like, oh, that was supposed to be changed. So, yeah, we were. Because they want to be able to kick off the year with this in place, which requires some work on technologies and to build these standards into our Power School. There is a little bit of front-loading that needs to be done.
And just to clarify, is this just fifth and sixth grade?
Correct. Yes, just fifth and sixth.
So I would like to make a motion that we approve the pilot for standards-based report card. Is that the right?
In art and music.
In art and music for the fifth and sixth grade next year to begin in the fall, I guess.
I second.
All in favor? Four oh oh. Thank you so much to your, your staff and your team leadership that they got this proposal together so quickly.
And I thank you on their behalf. They are very excited about this. So thank you for supporting them. Yeah.
I'd actually like to thank Rich Pearson, who isn't here today.
I agree.
Who took, who, who kind of slowed everyone down and made us think about the process and look at what happened. So thanks for it.
It was serendipitous. Yes, thank you, Richard.
And he blushes very easily, so it's good that he's not here. So moving along, we have vote on prepaid special education out-of-district tuitions, which we have information for in our packet. Ms. Yukna?
So last year was the first year we did this, and a lot of it was caused by the fact that we did have excess funding due to, you know, reduction because of COVID. And we prepaid three months, which is what we're allowed to, our out-of-district tuitions, a little over $356,000. Once you kind of get into this, you really need to just stay in it. So we budget for what we truly believe the full expense is going to be for the year. But what the advantage of doing this right now is, it's twofold. First of all, if we were to have, you know, some move-ins over the summer that were out of state, so we're going to be directly related to having to pay all the cost on, you have a safety valve because you've already prepaid some of the tuitions. So it's kind of like what many communities are doing with creating a special ed stabilization fund.
Sure.
We've just been able to do it because we use the resources that we had in a given year in advance without actually having to create the stabilization. We're using the state law and the process in which they allow us to do it. So we've done it again. It's, what we're looking for is approval to do $401,995.36 for the three-month period. And again, it just gives us that leg up. If anything were to happen, this is again, one more safety valve that makes it so we don't have to go back to the town if we get hit with some other type of expense. It's, that's an extraordinary item. And, you know, the town basically is still funding each year for what it would cost us if we have to stand on our own for that year's out-of-district tuitions.
Quick question, though. Just the chart that you have of the prepaid out-of-district tuitions. I'm making an assumption, and I never like to make assumptions. So like under the league school, you've got July, August, September, and then you have it repeated July, August, September. I'm assuming that's for two, either different students or groups or something along those lines. Okay. And that's for each of the different ones is the same?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Makes sense to me.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve?
A move that we approve the prepayment of $401,995.36 now for the fiscal year 2023.
Yes, utilizing FY '22 funds.
2022 funds.
I second.
Awesome. All in favor? Four zero zero. Thank you very much. I like that we do this. Very nice. Next up, end of year budget usage. Ms. Yukna?
So as I stated again, we've been able to look at a lot of curriculum things. So things that you've already heard that we've taken advantage of, art, tech ed. But there are a few other things, things that we mentioned just recently on hardening schools. So we intended to do about another deployment of about another 20 cameras in total between the five buildings, although we really don't have to do anything at the borough because that's, that's fully camered at this point. The locking systems, the entrance ways, stereo door replacements. High school, we have been on a program of some more modular upgraded furniture in classrooms so that it allows for more group thinking, you know, platforms. And by buying some of what we'll be doing this year, we will be finishing one of the departments in total. We're also looking at buying some of the standing desks for kids that really just, you know, need that ability. So we would be buying three for each classroom, giving that option on the high school level to start moving in that direction. And other than that, we're, it's our standard maintenance and things that we look at as far as fixing anything that we can within the town. My intention still is that we're more than likely to give back around $300,000 to the town out of our budget this year. Again, good amount of money, but mostly related to the fact that either we had, you know, excess retirements from last year and we still at the beginning of this last year had reduction in what we were spending on stuff because of the COVID. You know, not restrictions, but reduction in how we could do things.
Can I ask if you, and I meant to ask this before, what was the rough outlay for the new, the new tech equipment that we were talking about earlier this evening?
The 3D camera basically was about a $3,500 unit. The equipment in the, the table saws and stuff like that was about $22,000 in total. And the electrical side of that's probably another $7,500 to get that complete.
Well, I'm very grateful that we were able to do that and especially given the timing because usually it takes a generation to get any of those things upgraded. Any other questions, folks? For Mr. Yukna?
Just, just a quick point. I just wanted to thank you very much after the visual arts presentation last week. The high school pottery teacher really was talking about all these needs. And afterwards, I went in to speak to Mr. Yukna and everything had just already been taken care of. So I just wanted to say thank you so much. These highlights are benefiting our students directly. These staff that work so hard and care so much and, you know, just the real-world application of how you do what you do budget-wise and still, you know, you're able to help them. We still have a surplus in our budget. So thank you for everything you do.
That doesn't happen every year, obviously, but we're taking advantage when we can. And I think the, you know, again, this, a lot of this comes back to the school committee because, you know, we bring this stuff to you. You know what we're looking at doing. Obviously, if you said no, we wouldn't do it. But I think it's very important that we take advantage when we can because a lot of these things are big-ticket items. As you know, what we've been able to do with the music program, you know, we were looking at, you know, almost $100,000 worth of new instruments that we've been able to do over the last couple of years. So I think we've really kind of gone through the schools. You know, one of the new programs that we're doing this year or for next year, I guess, with, in the curriculum side, was a lot more expensive than what we had typically budgeted for. But because of, again, some of the surplus money, we're able to accomplish that as well and not leave us crippled in what we have to do for next year's funding of those programs as well. So, but again, we always look back, you know, we are a team player within the town and we need to, we can't just spend the money. We have to spend it wisely. And then what we don't need to spend, you know, in that sense, we fully, you know, enjoy being able to give back to the town so that we have that resource available to us as well as we move forward.
Whenever one of these things, they've been on, on the long-term list in terms of, none of these things are surprises. And I very much appreciate that as well.
We're a little bit over a year into one-to-one devices. What is the, are we on track with where those devices are, how they're lasting, how we're able to maintain them? Are we ahead? Are we behind?
Number of folds. We learned a lot, obviously, over the first year and a half, two years. The, the issue, obviously, on the elementary level with being able to keep them in the classrooms where they're really not needed to go home every day, will prolong the lives of those and, you know, make those a resource that's not going to be replaced quite as quickly as the others. Middle school, we don't have quite the diligence on the students' parts as far as taking care of some of the stuff. So we're having a lot more damage and related issues that way. But again, I think our tech department's done a great job sourcing ways of replacing or repairing the computers. And they're all trained now to be able to do that. So we don't have to send it out to depots to do it. And the high school has actually been pretty good. Again, you know, the standard stuff, unfortunately, it's, you know, you trip over the power cord type thing, you, you know, destroy either the power cord itself or you destroy the notch within the motherboard itself. So things like that happen. It's the, it's the destructive things, keys being popped out, you know, pen being left in and slamming it down, breaking the screen. Those things, and unfortunately, the same computer that we bought for a great price at the beginning of the whole COVID thing is now almost double the cost. So it's not even like our parts have cost us more than what we paid for the original ones. So, but again, I think technology has done a phenomenal job maintaining that. And what we also decided this year is a change with the middle school, and we brought back the middle school ones for a couple of reasons. I think number one, they're, they've been out there for a year and a half. And we know there's some damage that needs to be addressed so that when they come back for the curriculum side of things, they're all fully working. So it gives us a good way of assessing that. And we also don't see the need for the, for the students to have those over the two-month summer break, which would just be more wear and tear on the devices and stuff. So, but on the high school level, again, we left those out there because we think they obviously still do do things during the summer months that are based on the curriculum. So.
And I would just add to your point, Rob. We are a year in. We are going to have a full audit, curriculum audit type of our technology next year, probably led by an outside consultant so that we can look at things through the lens of teaching and learning, hardware, software, and sustainability. That is on the list for next year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That was my only question.
Oh, thank you. Next up, in terms of upcoming meeting items, our next meeting is our annual retreat, as it were, in the chapel on Mill Street. And Janet's been so kind to put out information on that early. And I'm going to encourage any committee members and administrators who want to see certain topics folded into the topics we usually talk about in there, that just afford them along to me so that Dr. Berdus and I can craft an agenda that meets everybody where we're at. So I'd appreciate that. And that's it. Any other comments on that? Okay. Now, in terms of other matters, one thing that I want to make sure that we're acknowledging here is that Dr. Mello is trying to leave us. This is new information. We've all been well briefed. She's been very, very, very forward about and timed her, her, her transition well and in doing so, from all indications, with great aplomb and stewardship for the district. And I just personally want to say thank you so much. I don't often see the words ambition and patience in the same sentence, let alone paragraph. But to me, you personify both of those because you are appropriately ambitious and have high standards. But things in this field take a long time and you match that with patience and diligence and bringing everyone along with you. So you'll be sorely missed.
Thank you. That's very kind of you. Thank you.
And it, I. Rob went to the common and picked these.
I did. I did.
So pretty.
Small.
And we wish you all the best.
Thank you. Nothing will ever compare to my experience here, as you know, and it's hard for me to talk about because you know what happens. So all I will say is that I feel very blessed to have been under the leadership of so many amazing leaders, to have had the support of so many amazing school committee members, present company included, and previous members of the school committee. I don't think there's any better position I could have ever had than to land in Foxborough for the last 15 years. And I'm leaving a very different person than when I came, and that's because of all the growth that you've supported. So thank you. I hope I leave it better than I found it. And I know you'll continue to do amazing, incredible things with our new leadership. And as I said, I'll be cheering you all on from the sidelines. You don't get rid of me that easy. I'll be around.
Well, your legacy will endure because the things you put in place are built to last.
Thank you very much.
Very, very grateful.
Thank you. As am I.
Any other matters?
I actually do have some updates for the Parks and Rec. The pool does open tomorrow for anyone interested. Farmer's Market has been going amazing. Tomorrow, we have, or Thursday, we have a petting zoo at the farmer's market. So if any of our families want to go and check it out, it is sponsored by a local company. So it's all free for anyone to come and enjoy. Booth Camp is going amazing. Middle School Adventure started today and went awesome. All of our mini camps still have a few openings for anyone interested in something for their kids to do for the summer. And that is it for our Parks and Rec update.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So excited for the petting zoo.
Isn't that right?
Can I just say one thing, Mr. Chair, not to take anything away from any of our previous Park and Recs representatives, but I think you've been the most enthusiastic representative that we've had in all the years. So thank you for bringing it every time, Sarah.
You thought it was going to be, you thought it was like a, like a, like a bad assignment. You.
No, I didn't. No. Everybody was so excited when I raised my hand, made me nervous, but I was excited for it. I was always excited for it, but then I was like, uh-oh, what did I do? And I love it. I think it's great. It's all fun stuff. And our kids have so much enrichment. We talk about all the enrichment we have in the school space, in the education space. But we have so much lovely enrichment outside of school too for our students. but we have so much lovely enrichment outside of school too for our students. It's awesome. Win-win.
Nice. Ms. Rimm, any other matters?
I would just say, point out that we have this nice little newspaper clipping in our packet about our music teachers in the running for an award. And that's with the Grammys, I believe, and very impressive. So it's very exciting for us and for them.
It is. And well-earned.
Absolutely.
I just want to thank Robert and Danielle for staying for the entire meeting. Even Mike abandoned you. So, you know, go back to that community thing that you're doing.
Stay here, new kids.
Was this like some type of hazing that you had to stay for a full meeting? Because you didn't stay the first time you're for a full meeting, did you? Did you?
I did.
And didn't?
I stayed, but everyone else left.
Okay, see? Again.
No, I remember that.
There you go. That's great.
We all wrote that down.
That's right. And I warned you, it got much rougher as the evening went on. So, you know, if you want to change your mind, you can blame it on us at this point. So.
It's not an option. End of the year is a good time.
Yeah, no, other than that, I hope everybody has a wonderful summer. I know all the end-of-the-year activities seem to go off well and everybody was excited and thankful that they got to do some of the things that had been done prior to two years ago. So just really excited that as we plan for next year and see what it looks like for us all. Thank you.
Dr. Berdus, any other matters?
So I would just like to say publicly that Allison is very generous with her time and all that accolades she gives to others that she's learned from, that we have all learned from her, myself included, have the privilege of working with her in different capacities for the last 11 years. I've been blessed to be able to learn from you and I continually hear from so many of our teachers that they have learned so much. And so you really have left a mark. We say, I think about Peter Reynolds and his children's books and making a mark. You have made that mark on the Foxborough Public Schools in your last 15 years, and we're all better for it. And we have learned to look at things differently. We've watched you grow, but we've all grown. And I think that the best part is being able to grow together. And we do wish you the very best. I know we've talked about the last school committee meeting and it's here and that's hard to believe. But we know that you're going to continue to do great things. And we also know that you will be cheering us on from the sidelines. And so I would just like to publicly say thank you for all that you've done for me personally, professionally.